Good morning, everybody. I'd like to call the Board of Elections meeting for November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty five, the absentee and regular board meeting to order. If we could all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we have an agenda here. Is there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, and we all had a copy of our minutes from the last reading. Has everybody had an opportunity to review those minutes?
Yes.
All right, I have a motion to approve the minutes from the November seventh, two thousand and twenty five meeting.
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, that's an end. All right, public comments, is there any public comments today? Okay, hearing none, then we'll move on to the new business. First item of new business is the supplemental absentee ballots.
We actually did not receive any more ballots to count, so no Yucca VAS. We do have three for the board to look at, but those are absentee by mails. It's just an envelope, they're not approved, they did not arrive by election day. So we still continue to receive stuff like that. You ran to grab those for me. We will have several forms to sign today, which is just the grand total. And it'll be for this one, for this supplemental abstract that says we have no ballots to add. So we'll have y'all sign that. I also have a complete list here of our early voting. So there's nothing to approve on here. It's just an envelope, we don't open them because there's no value to it. They're not going to count. They come in by election day, they do count, otherwise there's no reason to open the envelope. Because there's nothing to approve since it's past the due date. So there's the form for that. I'll also give y'all these, you're going to be signing all four of these. We have the poll book here, and we'll be signing these, which says we have a total of one hundred and twenty-two absentees, which includes by mail military and overseas. There's four copies in here, so you'll be signing all four of those, everyone. I'm just gonna let her pass all that down.
What came of the deceased vote on?
That's during the next meeting, probably, yes. And then I'll have one other thing for them to sign at Canvas.
So even though this is postmarked, from what I can see, October twenty eighth.
It doesn't matter, if it's not here on election day, it does not count. So in the past, they recently made the change that if it got here by Friday following election day, that we were able to approve it. They changed that a couple of elections ago, and if it's not here, election night, seven thirty P M., it doesn't count. So anything that comes in past that time, I'll present it to y'all to let you know it came in, but it's, there's no way to count it. So that's statute.
Are we signing this one?
You are, yes, there's four of those.
I really hope the vote ran tracking on this.
They actually have tracking through ballot tracks, all ballots are trackable once we send them to them. And then they start it back, they can follow that through the whole time for the life of the trip through the postal service.
What would the voter's remedy have been on that if they had realized it wasn't going to get, I mean, that was mailed.
They could go to early voting or election day if they're out.
October twenty eighth.
Yes, if they realized that their ballot had not come in by election day, they could go to their precinct and vote on election day.
Some of the other two are significant on later.
Yeah, I couldn't find the, I couldn't find the postmarked dates on the other two, but, but that one was definitely the twenty eighth.
So that's all for the Monday and the absentee, excuse me, there will be more things to sign at the eleven o'clock meeting.
Okay. Any questions regarding that? Now we'll move on to this next item of new business, which is the resolution for absentee ballot meetings for the March, for the March third, two thousand and twenty-six primary.
Yes, we're already planning and looking forward to the March primary. With the new deadlines for absentee by mail and provisionals and the volume that we're expecting or estimating for next year, we are recommending setting the meetings at the same time as this election. Of course, in November, we'll have to move them up earlier than five o'clock, and we'll be asking for that at that time. But now, statute requires the absentee meetings to begin the fifth Tuesday before the election at five A M. Sorry. We're here, but you're not at five, but at five P M., sorry. And we are recommending to add additional meeting for Monday, March second, at five P M., Friday, March sixth, at two P M., and the day of Canvas, Friday, March thirteenth, at nine A M. And that would be the same schedule as we're following now. And in that resolution, well, if that resolution is approved, we're recommending to reschedule the March tenth regular meeting to move it to the nine o'clock before Canvas, just like we're doing today. That way you won't be having additional separate meeting the week after the election.
Do we have to have this for this resolution?
No, no, that'll be a separate vote.
Any questions regarding setting the meetings for the applications or for action on the applications for absentee ballots?
And so that first absentee meeting is right after you send out the absentee ballots?
It would be January twenty seventh.
January twenty seventh.
Any other questions? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the resolution for action on the applications for absentee ballots, March third, two thousand and twenty-six primary election, to be held, additional meetings to be held on Monday, March second, two thousand and twenty-six, at five P M., Friday, March sixth, two thousand and twenty-six, at two P M., and Friday, March thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-six, at nine A M.
Unmoved, we accept, we. Unmoved, yes.
All right, I have a motion to approve the resolution as, as read. Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that's approved.
And then had the board like to reschedule the March tenth meeting to March thirteenth at nine A M.
Let's see the board.
Canvas would be at eleven on March thirteenth.
So kind of what we're doing today.
I have no objections.
Well then, do I have a motion to move the March tenth regular board meeting to March thirteenth?
So moved.
Okay, I want to be sure I'm looking at this correctly. I am looking at the resolution, and what I am saying is that we move the absentee ballot meetings to nine A M. on March thirteenth, and I think you just said nine A M. again, what did I miss there?
Yes, it'll be just like this meeting, it'll be a combined meeting.
Okay, all right, and then we'll have a separate something that afternoon, I guess, for whatever, Canvas or whatever.
Yes, maybe Canvas will be at eleven o'clock.
And we'll have a separate listing for the absentee meetings.
Yes.
If that's approved, you'll get your little card.
See, they were wrapping, they're hoping we're gonna approve this.
Card again. This is just state draft.
All right, so do I have a motion to move the regular board meeting from March tenth to March thirteenth?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right, next item of new business is the early voting plan for two thousand and twenty-six. We had a number of things in our packet today that was provided showing maps, prior meeting, I'm sorry, prior locations for early voting, both in the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-four electoral season, because we're coming into the even number year, so that's why we're looking at two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-four. Ms. Powell, do you have anything on this?
You also have today a stats on the turnout for the last few midterms. And you can see for early voting in the primary.
Thanks.
It's been increasing the last few, few elections. In two thousand and fourteen, early voting, three thousand nine hundred and seventy-nine, we had five sites opened in, seven sites in two thousand and eighteen with six thousand fifty-two voters, and in two thousand and twenty-two, seven sites, nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight voters. In the two thousand and twenty-four election, we added two additional sites and had nine sites in that year. Early voting sites are determined each election by the board. We gave you a list of those nine that we've used before. The board, by law, is required to open the site upstairs in the Griffin Room, which is our office, but you can add as many or as few additional sites as you would like.
Okay, because I'm so very new to New York. When I look at our map, I am a little bit concerned that that, the eastern side of the county only has one location. And I'm thinking that's, that's a lot of travel distance. Is there a reason? Somebody want to explain that to me? I mean, is there no population out there, is the turnout that low?
It goes mainly voter population centers, there's not a concentration of voters in those areas. So it does look like there's a lot on the western side, but that's where the voters are at. So they, they turn out heavily for those. Also have, you know, there's, we have to put early voting locations in tax-funded facilities, and there's, there's not a lot of tax-funded facilities out on that side of the county either. Again, because there's not a lot of population on that side. So it's sparsely populated versus dense population on the west.
And we did have that site at the Winget Community Center. We did move that to Marshall, to the library, a few years ago, to better service that part of the county.
The turnout for that area is between, at the lowest was two hundred in the years that we're looking at on the form y'all have, and the highest was four hundred and sixty-one compared to nearly three thousand at some of the other ones.
I know that's a very sparsely populated area. I mean, I, I look, I look out in the area, I live, and it's, you know, we, same thing. Okay.
But again, the board can, can decide, these are the sites we've used in the past. If you have another recommendation, we can contact that site and request it for early voting.
Are we doing, are we doing the Fairview Town Hall again?
Okay, that'll be the board's decision.
Okay. Well, I mean, we, we did move a lot of people from Hemby, which always gets packed, over to that Fairview, so. Just wanted to put that out there, if people are not familiar with that one, it didn't get as many people, but it was new and people hadn't really heard about it, but when they did, they went over there because Hemby gets so busy.
So they moved it from Hemby to Fairview, which I assume is.
No, they didn't move it, it's just.
Oh, well, no, yeah, I opened another one.
Yeah, it's, it was an additional site last year. The Waxall Recreation Barn and the Fairview Town Hall are two that we opened up to try to take some pressure. The Waxall one was to try to take some pressure off of the Wesley Chapel sites because they get slammed. So we needed to open up an additional site there to spread out the voters. And in the Fairview Town Hall, the same type of deal, we tried to take some pressure off of Hemby Bridge, but also tried to serve that northeastern area a little better, give those people a closer option to come to besides the, just the main library here.
So Fairview, Fairview is, Fairview Town Hall is a relatively recent addition.
It is, both Fairview and the Waxall Barn.
Okay.
Her first election was this past presidential.
They were, they were used this past year.
Okay, I like to mark on these, can't I?
Well, it looks like it is going to be, I don't want to say a sizable ballot, but at least an increased ballot with what's coming up in this two thousand and twenty-six. You have two senate districts, District twenty-nine, thirty-five, three N C House representative districts, fifty-five, sixty-eight, sixty-nine, three county board commissioner seats, four Board of Educations, the clerk of court, sheriff, mayor of Monroe, three council members of Monroe, state senator, and one House of Representatives, and district attorney. So there are going to be a number of, and several judicial seats that will be on the ballot as well. So it looks like there will be, you know, at least a desire, I think, for voters this primary season. I mean, I would suggest that have the nine sites available.
I mean, this is probably going to be a pretty contentious primary too, so.
Yeah, some of the countywide ones will be. I, I would be more apt to approve a nine early voting sites rather than the traditional seven.
I couldn't hear everything you were saying.
No, I'm sorry.
Face turn.
Sorry.
But you want to add a new site?
No, no, I'm saying I, I would rather do the nine sites rather than the traditional seven that would do this primary.
But I was thinking also, with all these new stuff, divisions and stuff coming up now, don't you think that's going to affect the districts and stuff that we're looking at change and that too, every time one is created, more people are moving here and stuff, it may still affect it in the long run.
And remember, I think the important thing to remember now is that we're just talking about the primary, setting the primary sites.
Yeah.
So we're not looking at setting the general at this point.
Yeah, this is strictly early voting primary.
Primary. I think maybe we can, to Ms. Williams' point, look at that when we get to the general. You know, to see what the turnout is in this primary adding the nine sites.
Well, primaries, you know, some of them are low because people don't take them as seriously as they do the record voting. So you're not wanting to see the true numbers, you see an estimate.
True. So are you, are you thinking about adding a site?
No.
No? Okay. How would we, how would we judge increases? I know it's, it's, it's tough because as Ms. Williams said, the primary, there's not as much interest as in the general, but.
Do you mean increases in, in the turnout at the sites or the different areas of the county, the precincts?
Different areas, you know, just looking at the numbers we saw last week, kind of give you an idea, it was low performance, even though we had high registration, lack of interest.
Right, and we can see too, the areas you were talking about growth, we can see those increases in the statistical report, and we can kind of review and monitor that to see which precincts are growing and what areas of the county are having more registered voters.
We should also be able to look out at the percentage of registered voters who show up in a primary year over year to indicate, let's say, voter enthusiasm, how's that, participation?
Yeah, and it also depends on, on the ballot, you know, if a candidate in one party is not challenged, then they just totally skip that primary and go straight to the November ballot. So it's, you know, we don't start filing till December first, so it's hard to know which contests are going to be challenged within, within that party's primary. And that, that makes a difference too in the turnout.
Okay, all righty.
I, I think that, you know, it's hard as you go down the road, if you like, think about subtracting on, because people will be just totally confused. So I think we should go with what we have and see how that, that works.
The nine.
The nine, yeah.
Yeah, and then if we need to add for the, for the.
Fall.
For the fall, we can. Yeah, I don't think we should take any away, for sure.
Yeah, I will give it.
The board wants to vote on the sites first, and then maybe you could move to the weekend hours.
All right, having a discussion as to the sites for the primary of the March third primary of two thousand and twenty-six. Do I have a motion to approve the nine sites that were used in the two thousand and twenty-four primary? So do I have a motion to approve using the nine sites that were utilized for the two thousand and twenty-four primary?
My motion, we approve the nine early voting sites that we used last year in the two thousand and twenty-four election.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none. All right.
And those sites will be open, by statute, from eight A M. to seven thirty P M. at a minimum.
On the weekdays.
On the weekdays, and the last Saturday from eight until three. So if the board chooses, they can add additional weekend hours for Saturday or Sunday.
What, what, what type of turnout do you get in the primaries on?
Fairly low until the last weekend, and the last Saturday is required, you can't do away with it. The required time for the last Saturday is eight to three, so that's required. It's always goes up from Wednesday to Saturday of the last week, and the first couple of days is busy. So you've got the early bird, and then the last chance, in the middle is a little slow.
What have you all traditionally done in the primaries?
Saturday, we like to keep the time the same on Saturdays because it confuses people. So the board's able to adjust the time that they would like on the first two Saturdays, but it's confusing to the public if you change it from the last Saturday's time. So last Saturday required eight to three.
So last Saturday required 8 to 3, but the board can choose what time they would like for the Saturdays, other than that one.
In the last midterm, we were open two Saturdays, the last Saturday and the Saturday before that. Um, not the first, just the second and third Saturday from 8 to 3.
I kind of like that.
Yeah.
I kind of like having that next to the last Saturday. For, I mean, the reality is, a lot of people don't know they can early vote, they can register it and early vote at the same time, so that, that gives the voters a little extra time.
So that would be, um, February 21st and February 28th.
Well, I like it, the rest of the board might not want to get that.
Again, I, I, I think that's probably a better decision based upon the fact that it is a primary, so you're going to have the, the low. And who knows, come November, who's opposed, who's not opposed, so that's going to play a big role in turnout. You know, if your.
Yeah.
Your candidates are not opposed in your primary.
But we don't know, we don't know at this time, we don't, we have no idea if he's running anyway, in reality.
Right. That's, you know, I think, a little bit of a, a difficulty in trying to set the times without knowing who's, who's doing it, but that's where we are.
Uh, I'm going to make the motion that we use, uh, a schedule similar to the 2022 primary election, which had the Mondays through Fridays and two Saturdays.
I'll second that.
You have a motion on the table? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none.
Unanimous.
Unanimous.
Yes.
Oh, aren't you playing your career?
That's right, unanimous.
No one has to go anywhere.
No one has to go, we don't have to send it to the state. Decide, thank you.
All right. Nice collaboration, everyone. Moving on, we have the staff reports, uh, director's report, Ms. Holloway.
Yes, um, first I'd like to do a little pre-canvas, um, task. During the election day reconciliation process, it was discovered that two voters, one in precinct 16, which is Hemby Bridge Elementary, and one in precinct 17A, Wesley Chapel Elementary, checked in, signed their ATV, but when they received their ballot, they decided not to vote the ballot. The ballot was spoiled instead of inserted in the tabulator. There's no notes on who the, the names of the voter, um, so they have voter history. There's no way they can remove voter history. And we have been instructed by the state that if the voter accepts that ballot and signs that form, they have, in fact, already voted. So we're asking, um, to balance that we manual, do a manual edit and add two blank ballots, basically undervotes for those two precincts. And we could go ahead and let Paige do that now during this meeting, and that would be one less thing for us to handle at Canvas at 11.
Why, why wasn't it, even if the, the voter decided not to mark on the ballot, why don't we just run it in, scanner anyway?
That was an error, error of the official's part.
Okay, so normally that's what happens.
Normally that's what happens, yes, yes.
I'll make a motion that we, um, count those two, uh, ballots as undervotes and proceed with that, uh, during this meeting.
I have a motion for Ms. Powers, and I heard a second for Ms. Williams. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, um, and we can wait till the end to do that, so the board can move into that room, reporting room. I also gave you, um, the candidate filing notice. The city of Monroe, we were waiting on them to decide their filing fees, they decided to stay at $5. And we have this, uh, for release, and if you have any questions, let us know. Um, filing starts December 1st at noon, um, through noon on December 19th.
Who's the filing fee of the judicials?
That, the state will have that information, um, they haven't forwarded that to us yet. But if someone is interested, they can contact the state board, or we can, um, try to, try to get that info. Normally the state will send us out a press release with the information for the candidates that file at the state. We have not received that yet, this is basically our, just our county info. All judicial and, um, federal and district attorney files at the, at the, in Raleigh, at the state board, which they have a different, um, location set up for that. So those candidates all file there, the ones on the first page of your release, the House, Senate, and the county and city races will file here at our office during those times.
So are you looking for a motion to approve these fees, or?
No, those fees are set by statute, um, this is just for information only for the board, um, and to make you aware of filing. And then, um, when that begins, and we'll also email this information and send out a press release so you can share if you have questions. Then I have the financial reports for today, also, um, our election costs have basically not been posted, these reports are through the end of October, and we are on track, 29.9% spent for admin, and there's only 4.1% posted for election cost. So we'll have, have more of those posted next month. And then, remember, we have the primary election too, that's, those funds are included in this budget. And the last thing I want to mention is the North Carolina State Board of Elections Winter Conference is January 26th and 27th. And board members, once appointed, are required to attend a conference within the first six months of appointment and another within their first two years. So this, this one will be virtual, um, so you can watch from home. If you don't have access, you could come to our office and we'll set up an area for you. Just let me know if you plan to attend, and we will, um, pay your registration fee.
So that's January 26th and 27th?
Yes, and usually on the second day it ends around lunchtime. And I know Ms. Burnett was appointed after the fall conference, so you missed that one.
Well, yeah, I'm pretty sure I've got to do this one.
That would be great if you could, yes ma'am.
I'm going to do it virtual, I don't think I'm.
Yeah.
That's the only choice.
Easier.
Oh, okay.
So it's, what time does it run?
I don't have the agenda yet, um, probably 8:30 or 9 to 4 approximately on the first day. But I'll send that agenda as soon as we receive it. Just kind of giving you a heads up for those dates.
I, my, I don't have, I don't have my 26 calendar yet, so I can't write it down.
So you can let us know, I mean, we don't need to know today, just, um, say within the next month. Go ahead and pay that fee and get you registered, and then you'll receive a link.
You notify us through email, right? I see you notify us through email, right?
Okay, thank you. Uh, voter registration, let us.
Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
I will be presenting the, uh, voter registration report for October. Total registration for 178,941. We had, uh, 158,181 active and 20,760 inactive registrations. Reporting period, 1,005 of the 73 registrations were removed. 385 total registrations removed. Out of those, excuse me, the first number was approved, the second number, 385 were removed. 67, uh, removed, uh, registrations were in act. New registrations, 390. Registered registrations, 559. Changes of information, around 446. We'll go into the verification section in the RA report. 1,537 first and second verification mailings were sent. 25 first verifications were returned undelivered. 25 verifications returned by the voter. Confirmations we processed, nine confirmations were returned by the voters. 38 registered, uh, excuse me, confirmations were sent. One confirmation was not returned at all. The sec, well, the next section of the stats, by county, by party, by race, by ethnicity, and by gender. The next, uh, report we'll look at is the party change cost tab report. Uh, we've had 129, uh, party changes. And then we have the next, uh, stat report for the county. By party, by race, by precinct. That's for your observation. And then the last report is the NCOK mailings that we sent out beginning, or we sent out on July 1st. We had, uh, 222 come back that we had processed. And then 11 was, uh, unclaimed without board address. 35 moved to another county within the state. 82 moved from the state, 93 moved within the county, and one was reported deceased. That's all I have, any questions?
I would still like to get a copy of the VR statistics by precinct as a percentage, with the party affiliation as a percentage of the registered voters in the precinct, rather than simply as a number, if that's possible.
I don't know that I can do that right now, but I will get with the state on getting that for you, I have that on my desk for you.
I would just like to see these numbers, like I said, as a percentage, rather than have them go through precinct by precinct, doing the mental math to figure, you follow me? I'm not, and, and I'm not that good with the spreadsheet. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, voter outreach, Ms. Jordan.
The sheriff is not here, so I would ask to deliver her a point. Instead, uh, for the month of November, we only have two things on the calendar as of this morning. On the 18th of November, that's next Tuesday, uh, Parkwood High School students will be taking a tour of the building. And then on the 22nd of November, that's Saturday, uh, we'll be attending a parade held in the town of Marshville, so.
What is that parade?
No idea, it just said Marshville Parade on the calendar, I looked on their website, they don't have anything posted. I have no idea.
Just parading.
Yeah, there's nothing on Marshville's website about it.
Sam and Paul will be involved.
Everyone must have prayed.
Praise some kind.
I am. Turkish parade.
Very nice.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to our general discussion. For the good of the order, is there anything that, uh, wants to be brought up for the good of the order? Here we go. Uh, we'll move on, uh, oh, we're going to go do those absentee, or, I'm sorry, those undervotes.
Yes, please.
All right, so we're going to move into the next room to do the end of votes, if we could.
So Ms. Sanders, did you come on 84?
Uh, no, that's. I come up to my house, yes. What's on it, I know it's Wesley Chapel and 16, what's happening there?
I don't know, what's happening there? I don't know, I've never seen such a.
Well, you don't usually come this early in the morning, right?
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
I don't know, I mean, I, I mean, I was watching my, my ways, and it kept adding time on, I'm like, I'm not going to make it, and that was like 8:35, and I'm like, I did what everybody else was doing and turned around and.
That's why I try not to hear, not disappoint, it's too early in the morning, it's a madhouse.
There, there was a, a large accident last night, right, Wesley Chapel, or, I'm sorry, Weddington Maniac Church, Wesley Chapel.
Yeah, I, I saw that.
Right, I don't know, there was.
It was last night.
Yeah, I don't know if there was some kind of.
This was probably close to high school.
What'd you do, where, what'd you do to have to, how you, how, I mean?
I, I did a U-turn, went back out to 16, went down to Dennis, Dennis to Newtown. Which I knew I could make it that way, you know, if we were to make it.
That sounds like something.
It was, it was clear, I mean, I didn't go past the school this morning.
Yeah, I could see, I could see where the traffic was backed up to Constance.
That sounds like something random.
Yeah, maybe, I was looking at the school going on, it's very.
I can't talk now.
It's Friday. It's Friday morning, I don't think they have a coming on Friday morning. Maybe they're getting ready for a coming on Friday night.
Yeah, I don't know.
Because, start, I just, I prepared a forward report.
Okay.
I made the testament, I prepared that report.
Thank you.
I know, I was in Waxahaw yesterday afternoon, and apparently they had a smoke scare at, on South Main Street where Maxwell's and all that, that, so anyhow, they had the whole block shut down. This was like at 4 o'clock in the afternoon. Uh, the South Main Street with four, four fire trucks and police cars, and you want to talk about a traffic backup?
Yeah, I try to stay away from that area. I mean, it always seems like it's some backup down there.
Roads are full all day now, like, you can tell the difference in the people that moved here since I've been here anyway, that's what I look at, but, I mean, 7:04 is packed. From here on to Matthews, takes over half an hour now to get there sometimes. My goodness. Yeah, stopping, breaking, and you got these bumper rattles and folks on the phone not paying attention, like, don't have them, they're there on the road.
I mean, do we just have to go in the box, when they are, are voted, unvoted, voted?
Yeah, we're putting them in the box. My hat is in the original box, is this the only two?
We'll keep those separate.
Okay, all right, so you don't need it, okay.
One hundred percent, a March day. So going out and telling at the end of March. Did not complete.
I think you'll be okay.
Did not complete. But I won't hear that, uh, when I say it's over again. That will not be here, but on twenty-fourth.
My husband travels for his job, and he's going everywhere, and I'm like, I can't go, I can't go. But there is one at the, at the end of March, and I can probably go to that.
Vegas.
Uh-huh, this, this one's in Vegas. It's some, it's a, like a little show or something.
Oh, good luck.
End of March.
This is the Hockey National Tournament.
Oh, is it?
So, I mean, it'll be a ton of
Oh, yeah.
smelly kids walking around. Over there.
Okay, so I just took pictures of this, okay? Saved it in my phone, made it its own album, so that I can go back and look at it in case I can find this little.
I printed and put it in my refrigerator.
My refrigerator is friendliness, and therefore it won't.
No, I didn't go back there. It's the other day. I look at it.
But I'm just saying, you know? Just in case.
I guess I can sit here and put these in the.
If we don't, if chance don't have any return at that first meeting, we could cancel that meeting. I'm likely for this.
Yeah, I think it's unlikely. I mean, I was surprised for the municipals. It was like ten for that, something like that, that first meeting. Next week, only got four.
We need some doughnuts.
We have something for you after this meeting.
Okay. You know, Wendy's, I'm, I'm in a long meeting, and this gonna go over than, than an hour and a half. I will be thinking about something to eat. I had a great breakfast this morning, but.
I did too.
Uh, I sure did, but Bella and I eat together, so she gets me up, so I.
Fix her bowl. She won't eat unless I'm sitting there with her. So, you know, fix me something. But it's all got her like that.
Before and after. Okay, here's a log, shows you the changes.
Thank you, Paige.
Log, changes the changes.
Do we wanna sign both of these?
So basically, we get about a two-month break before we start doing the.
So before, shows the thirty undervotes, the after shows the thirty-two.
So, are you gonna want me to cancel the December meeting?
Yes. I can suggest that before we adjourn.
I think this is the first time we've had the early voting plan to pass out a candidate filing. We usually have to send that to them later. And that's great.
Very.
I will mention about, uh, so somebody may be writing an executive order.
What's that?
Nothing yet. Then somebody keeps talking about writing an executive order.
Is it gonna leave us scrambling at the last minute? So we get about a two-month break before we start doing absentee. I don't know who told me this was gonna be about a couple hours of, uh, whoever it was. If I can remember, I'd be having a word with them.
It's just a.
Foreign truth.
Change of date.
So we can go back.
Okay.
Thank you. Easy one, it's oxygen. I'm glad we're preparing. We'll hold those to go challenge to that.
Oh, we have to take that. It was just a hand. Yes, we want to go see, ready this.
Oh, I'm dressed in so walking off, it's like, I really do dress tall. I walk off with my pocketbook sitting here wide open.
Yeah.
It's, it's, uh.
City USS, that's true.
So we can walk around like this.
Yeah.
That's what it's, it's what it's.
So before we adjourn, see that we have our early voting plan in place now, um, there is a question of whether we want to cancel the December ninth, uh, regular board meeting.
I move we cancel the December ninth regular board meeting, since we have an early voting and, and in place.
We have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Nobody's opposed. Alright. At this point, uh, are we suspending or are we adjourned?
Adjourned.
Okay. Uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright, and we will come back at eleven. Thank you.